Are you good for me, sir? Check in. Podium mic check. Podium mic check. Commissioner Howell, mic check. Commissioner Lopez, mic check. Commissioner Beatty, mic check. Commissioner Dennis, mic check. Commissioner Meister, mic check. Justin Wagner, mic check. Mic check. Tom Stoltz, mic check. One minute. Thirty seconds. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six.
Well, good morning. Welcome, everybody, to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission meeting. I have a full agenda today. I want to welcome you, those that are joining us on Facebook, those joining us on YouTube and on our television partner, KPTS. Also, I want to welcome many of you that are here joining us in person today. We're glad that you're here. I want to remind you, as always, that when you walked in, you could have picked up a meeting agenda packet and that'll tell the order of business that we're going through today. And also, if you ever have questions about some of the supporting documents, the same supporting documents that we have access to as we make decisions on these items, you can always access those at sedgwickcounty.org and follow along with us. I just want to let you know in advance, there will be some changes to the schedule today. As you know, or should know, that we are also the fire board for Sedgwick County Fire District Number One, and we have a guest with us today that we're going to move their agenda up in the order right before new business so that we can deal with that and welcome our guest and make sure he's out on time. But also, there's been some changes to the agenda, and some of these items are going to get pulled, and some other things are going to be deferred based on some information that has been made present to us here in the last few days. So with that being said, let's just get to work, and we'll walk through this agenda together. So I'll officially call the meeting to order for October 2nd, 2024. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invitation to be led by Reverend Jill Sander Charlie. Please remain standing for the flag salute. I'm going to share today a prayer for the Jewish New Year. Rosh Hashanah begins at sundown today, October 2nd, and ends after nightfall October 4th. A member of my congregation sent this to me from some Israeli family that he has. "A Prayer for the New Year." Natan Alterman. "Grant me one year of true peace, a year for us of blossoming and only holy days, a year to lead love and warmth over the fences of my house, and to know once again what is good and pleasant to the eyes. A year without the voices of hate and the cries of mourning, without the visions of blood and without the dreams of war, without the fear of the terror that reads from a scroll, without the distance of the future that is buried in the ground. Grant us treasures not of kingdoms, not of the proud and the towering palaces, but one small piece of true peace and for us of blossoming, that in them we shall slowly begin to change. To feel once again the sweet sense of the hidden, to walk toward the happiness of abundant fragrance, to bring to me a Sabbath of perfect silence, and to be worthy of a Sabbath for the nations. Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend, thank you. College Hill United Methodist Church, is that correct? Okay, thank you for joining us this morning. We really appreciate you being here. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meister.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. We're going to start today with good news. Sedgwick County has once again earned a top credit rating from S&amp;P Global Ratings. In its recent analysis, S&amp;P awarded Sedgwick County the highest rating of AAA with a stable financial outlook. This rating reflects several key factors: comprehensive planning and budget analysis, outstanding financial management transparency, consistent revenue growth, strong reserves and liquidity, manageable debt and low liabilities. The report concluded that we expect Sedgwick County to maintain exceptionally strong credit quality during the two-year outlook horizon. Congrats to the finance team and to the B.O.C.C. for your continued focus on positive tax dollar management. Next up, we have Fire Prevention Week. It starts on Sunday, October 6th, and goes through October 12th. The focus this year is on smoke alarms. Fire Chief Doug Williams is here to talk about this important safety topic after I play a short video.
... of the Sedgwick County Fire District One. If you're like me, family means everything, and having a working smoke alarm in your home is the best way to protect you and your loved ones from a fire. It provides early warning if you're asleep when a fire breaks out and reduces your risk of dying by 50%. Smoke alarms are such a life-saving tool. Sedgwick County will install them for free for anyone who lives in the Fire District One. Just contact us to schedule an appointment. Smoke alarms should be placed on each level of a home, inside and outside every bedroom, and in any stairwell. For the best protection, choose dual-sensing smoke alarms that detect smoke and heat. Wire all smoke alarms in the house together, so when one of them sounds, they all will. Finally, make a fire escape plan and practice it, so everyone knows this sound and what to do. To learn more about fire prevention, visit the Sedgwick County Fire District One website.
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning. Doug Williams, Fire Chief. Fire Prevention Week is our annual week that we try to focus on fire education every year, and for this year, it's October 6th through the 12th, which starts next week. As they said in the video this year, they're focusing on the smoke alarms and having one in bedrooms and hallways and one on every floor so that you get good early detection of a fire. In the United States, 13 out of 14 homes have smoke detectors, but every year, we run fire desks, and we have fire desks that are in houses where smoke alarms don't work or where they're not installed. So we're trying to really push that pitch again this year to get them to where they work, have you check, everybody check them every time, and also every month, once a month, and then make sure that the homes that don't have them, we can come out and install them if you're in the fire district. And I know there's other departments that do that as well, but that's what our focus is now, and making sure that everybody gets out.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Any questions, Chief? Appreciate the messaging you guys give with that video, and it is very, very important to get that information out to families in our community. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. And just want to remind everyone that the Red Cross also provides free fire smoke alarms, so we can talk to them if you need one. And every year, we recognize our fallen firefighters, and Sunday at 1:30 at the Firefighters Museum will be recognition of all the firefighters in the state of Kansas that have died saving lives of others. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that reminder, Commissioner. Chief, thanks again. Appreciate you coming and sharing.
Okay. Last but not least, October is Cyber Security Awareness Month. Chief Information Officer Mike Elpers and IT Manager Joe Courier are here to give you a quick update. We will actually start with a quick video. This is something that we have shared with all of our staff, and we wanted to share with you.
The people at the top lie and manipulate, and everyone else just does as they're told. Look, people like you and me, we don't have friends. We have targets.
Can I ask you a question? Why did you pick me for this?
You're not my best, it's true, but you do have useful skills, and you're in the right country. But more importantly, look around you. Everyone in that office is a sheep, blindly doing what they're told, when they're told, while aligning someone else's pockets. To be honest, Mark, you look like you belong there. You look like a sheep.
Now, we have our IT folks.
Morning, Mike.
Thank you, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Mike Elpers, your Chief Information Officer. That is a teaser of an upcoming series that will be going out, I think, I believe, today to promote cybersecurity awareness to all of our end-users. It's an ongoing effort of our IT security group to promote cybersecurity awareness and to get that down to the employee level. I wanted to share just some, throw some data at you this morning. What I have here is a couple of charts. The first one at the top is emails, the emails that we receive. As you know, we have several systems in place, layers of security to detect and protect us against cybersecurity attacks, but the focus of those attacks has very much shifted from a systematic one to an end-user one. In other words, our end-users are being targeted more than the systems that we use. The emails that come in, we get over a million emails a month, incoming emails. You can see, on the average, over the course of this year, over 53% of those have been blocked. They've been deemed malicious, right? Some of those we know get through, and we have to rely on the awareness of our end-users, of our employees that receive these emails, to be diligent and to be on the lookout for it. One of the things we do annually is our security awareness campaign. We rolled that out a couple of months ago. It continues to roll as new employees come on board, but we're also, Joe Courier, our CISO, is taking steps to continually promote security awareness, one of which is that teaser that you just saw that will roll out. It's kind of like a Netflix series, real actors and this kind of thing. It's a little more interesting than the cartoonish-like quizzes and things like this, so hopefully that'll promote some. We also have a phishing campaign going on, and we started that earlier this year as well, and were pretty discouraged at the results that came in from the initial test. But since then, I wanted to share that things are being, are more encouraging. We still get people that click. We still get people that open attachments, but nobody has gone to a site and actually entered data, right? That is, that is the key. Some of these email phishing attempts that you get look very, very realistic. Joe, I think, can talk to some of the current events that are going on and how attackers take advantage of some of those events, but in the end result, it's a user opening up and saying, "This is my user ID. This is my password," and that's not happening in our current, in our current testing that's going on, which is very encouraging. So don't want to take up too much time, but do feel like it's worth mentioning Cyber Security Awareness Month and stressing how important it is for all Sedgwick County employees and this organization.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions from Commissioners? I would say that I just, the amount of work that you're doing and the trainings, and I'll just say, there was just a few months ago, I was awoken about 2:30 in the morning because there was a potential threat, and you were already communicating with the staff and department heads, and then I think your staff, the cybersecurity staff went almost 48 hours straight with just working, trying to make sure that all the systems here at Sedgwick County Government protect not just the departments here, but the taxpayers and the citizens of this community were protected. So it doesn't go unnoticed, Mike, Joe. We appreciate all the work you're doing. It's, your field is changing daily, and we appreciate the leadership that you guys show and the flexibility and that you're adapting to stay ahead of the curve. So thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
That's all I have for today. I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, I think there's a few. Commissioner Meister.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and nice for the fire thing and fire awareness and cybersecurity awareness, but your, I just want to, should go without, should be mentioned that the AAA rating from S&amp;P reconfirmed. So S&amp;P is the ratings around the country, and there's 105 counties in Kansas, and there's only two in Kansas that have a AAA rating. We're one of them. And just confirm that there's only 106 counties nationwide that have AAA rating, and that's worth noting. We've said it before, but it's worth noting for the public and for the record, and I want to congratulate our finance team and really all of the employees that contribute to this good rating. So congratulations.
Very good. Okay, Nicole, thank you. Good to have you back. Glad you're back in the motion and the swing of things. So, very good. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Public agenda.
Okay, we do have a few people signed up for public agenda. We'll give you five minutes. Just come, give your name and address for the record. We're excited you're joining us today to share your feedback and insight. So first on that list is Bruce Fitzwater. Good morning, sir. Good morning, sir. Five minutes from the county clerk. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. The reason I'm here today, I live on what's commonly known as the Belt Plain-Baja Freeway, which is southern Sedgwick County. It's in Ms. Lopez's district. It's in Salem Township, where we get no police protection whatsoever, and I repeat, no patrols. I spent 25 years in Sedgwick County, in Salem, in Rockford, Riverside, and also in Gibson Township, where I saw police protection. I've spent over 150,000 miles on a rural route in 25 years. I'm disgusted. What brought this up is I have a sweetheart in hospice. I was notified that the four-wheelers and the cyber sides and also dirt bikes that run up down the roads and in the fields at night are okay, because there's no noise ordinance in Sedgwick County. As being a farm kid, I understand the need for farmers, manufacturing, some nighttime activity that causes noise, but something needs to change. I can tell you, Mr. Howell, in yours and Riverside and Gibson, there's plenty of police protection. I've seen them all the time, but there's nothing out there. It's like a hole in the doughnut. We were so excited when we finally got another paved road on Hillside, caused more problems. We have people in a hurry to go lose their paycheck at the casino and mad as heck driving back. So we need some police protection out there. And I'd like to hear about the noise ordinance. I think it's important.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your feedback and comments. A couple of questions. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you for coming. We are doing a lot to look at what does noise ordinance in the county look like, and how do we start having the mechanism for the sheriff's office to be able to do something about that. A lot of this started with the, which I'm sure you're aware, 95th and Broadway, the event center that's continuing after we denied that application. And so we've seen a lot of concern about how do we make sure that we have a mechanism that we can stop some of these things, and yours is going to be a part of that conversation as well with the noise ordinance. We've had a few meetings. We have one with the sheriff coming up. It was supposed to be last week. It got rescheduled until next week, so we are working on what does that look like going forward. Unfortunately, it's not just one commission, one district. It's got to be a countywide problem because we're all having the same kind of issues in rural Sedgwick County. So we are working on it, and we'll bring you in as much as we can on the progress that we're making.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, first of all.
Bruce Fitzwater.
Bruce. Thank you so much. First of all, I want to say I'm so sorry for your sweetheart in hospice. That's very difficult.
And you know.
I'm so sorry for you, and I pray for you and her, and we will continue that. So if there's anything we can do for you on that regard, please let us know. But I do want to just share with you a couple of things that you mentioned. First of all, actually, believe it or not, no county in the state of Kansas actually has a sound ordinance. Out of 105 counties, not one county has a sound ordinance. And so we have had people advocate for sound ordinances in the county, and we could do that. It's very difficult to enforce. It's very difficult to have a way to objectively determine whether or not some threshold has been met. I have been advocating for sound ordinance for event centers specifically, not for just the, the, the public at large, but I do think event centers are very special because sometimes they operate till 2:00 in the morning with amplified music, and it is, is something we have some control over. So I would, I would advocate for some type of reasonable regulation on that specific thing, but in terms of people just enjoying their, their own property, shooting guns and running four-wheelers and things like that, it would be very hard for Sedgwick County to lead the, to lead the entire state of Kansas on a sound ordinance, but it's certainly something we have talked about in the past. But, and then, second of all, I'd say that in, I can't speak for how the sheriff runs his operation, but he is an elected official. When you say police, I assume you mean unincorporated sheriff's patrol.
That's correct.
Okay. And the sheriff, of course, needs to answer that question. We have no authority whatsoever over the sheriff. We do fund his office, but we don't have any control on what he does. We can, we can advocate for some type of stepped-up enforcement for a time, and they will usually do that at our request, but they can't do that forever. And, and one thing I have noticed is that they tend to spend more time where the more people are, and I'll just say, in my district is different than the other districts in a couple of ways. I have about 106,000, I'm sorry, 106 square miles, whereas Commissioner Dennis has 454 square miles. His district's four and a half times larger than mine, and because of that, you're going to, you know, I think that they will drive up and down those paved roads once in a while, but they're not going to get out onto the dirt roads, do any type of actual patrolling, because they just don't have enough, enough officers on the force to do that. I do think that in my district, for example, I have, my population density is four and a half times larger than his, and I think we see that there is a, a focus on where things happen. So I think you're going to see more sheriff's officers, perhaps, where there's more people doing more things and things are going wrong. There's more police calls and things like that. That's why we have a station actually in the Oaklawn community. There's a sheriff's office right there. So, and so again, I do think that the sheriff needs to answer that question. I, I think it's great for us to advocate for a particular situation, and I'm sure he'll be glad to hear that, and he'll respond in a very, very, he always does. He does a great job, but ultimately, this is an elected sheriff's situation where he needs to, he needs to make decisions on how to, how to make the patrol work for the citizens of Sedgwick County. Does that make sense?
The Oaklawn issues are a problem. They state that they can't just get out of Oaklawn. I understand the officer's situation, but it's a difficulty. The entire county needs to be policed. I know at some point, I'm outside all the time, so I would know. I would know. After I retired, I would see a police officer. I just don't.
And you're down in Salem right now?
I'm in Salem Township.
Well, Oakland does get quite a lot of calls, and so they have to respond to those calls, and a lot of the officers are busy doing those calls right there. But again, I think it's, the sheriff needs to maybe reach out to you and hopefully see if there's a way we can focus on whatever it is that you're focused on as being a problem. Maybe he needs to hear that directly from you to him, so we're trying to make that happen. Okay?
Thank you again.
Mr. Fitzwater.
Yes.
One second. Tom, we have his cell phone number and his address. Can we make sure the sheriff has this information and ask somebody out? Anytime we've asked the sheriff or some of his staff to reach out, he's always done it and always tried to help. So can we make sure he has this information, that a way he reaches out? Thank you for coming and sharing. We appreciate it. Okay. Next up, Mr. Andrew Crane from Guiding Paws. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Andrew Crane, Guiding Paws ICT. I wanted to extend, I am on the Access Advisory Board, member of that board, and wanted to invite you guys to the Access Advisory Board. We got a news article that came out on September 4th that did a ranking of the disability access around Wichita and Sedgwick County, and we were really low on the, of cities and counties on that for disability access. And one of the things that I'm encouraging you guys to do is come to the Access Advisory Board on this month, on the 23rd, at 10 o'clock. you guys to do is come to the Access Advisory Board on this month, on the 23rd, at 10:00 at Invision, and lower level of the Invision Building. So, any questions that I can answer?
Yeah, very good. Thank you, Andrew. Any questions or comments? I would say, Andrew, you continue to advocate for those in the blind and disabled community, man. We appreciate your advocacy. We had a meeting just a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
Speaker Hawkins was there, Mayor Wu was there. You coordinated that meeting and shared a lot about the waitlist and some ideas that you had. And I just say, I appreciate your advocacy, and you take a lead in this in the community. And we all see it, we all know it, and we're grateful for you, bud. One second. Commissioner Howell?
Just want to make a point of, it needs to be understood, is that they meet on Wednesday when we're meeting here at 9:00. They're meeting at 10:00. So, the chance of us actually being at that meeting is pretty small. It's just that we're going to be here at 9:00, and your meeting starts at 10:00, same day. So, I don't know how that would actually happen. But thank you for advocating. I appreciate you, sir.
No problem.
So, Andrew, what I'll do is I'll see if we can get the minutes from that meeting, and I'll be happy to share with the commissioners.
Okay.
Okay, bud?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, very good. That's it for public agenda. I will make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
A motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, item A, regular meeting minutes of September 11th, 2024.
Okay, all commissioners were present. Any questions or comments on the meeting minutes? Okay, I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 11th, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item.
Proclamations, item B, proclamation declaring Junior League of Wichita Appreciation Week.
A wonderful proclamation. I've asked Commissioner Sarah Lopez to read it.
Thank you. Whereas Junior League of Wichita was established in 1925 and is an organization of women committed to advancing women's opportunity for leadership and meaningful community impact through volunteer action, collaboration, and training. And whereas the Junior League of Wichita has been the driving force behind the kinds of investments, initiatives, and institutions that make Sedgwick County a healthier, more vibrant community, including the Pride of the Plains exhibit at Sedgwick County Zoo, revitalization of Heritage Square Park, establishment of the Baby Mobile Outreach Program at the Wichita Children's Home, and a partner in the expansion of the Child Advocacy Center. And whereas the Junior League of Wichita is hosting the 19th Annual Holiday Galleria to raise funds to fulfill their current initiative of empowering women to be safe, smart, and successful by offering assistance with connecting women with life-saving resources, financial literacy education, providing scholarships, and advanced learning, professional development opportunities, and mentorship. Whereas Junior League of Wichita's core values of diversity, collaboration, community investment, leadership, respect, and service enable all women in Sedgwick County to serve as catalysts for lasting change within their community. Now therefore, be resolved that Chairman Ryan K. Beatty and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 2nd through 6th, 2024, as Junior League of Wichita Appreciation Week in Sedgwick County, and encourage all citizens to express our appreciation by supporting the Junior League of Wichita by attending the 2024 Holiday Galleria held on October 3rd through 6th as Century 2 Expo Hall. So, with that, I will move that we approve this proclamation.
I second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
And to accept is Paige Gray, which is the holiday, which is chair of Holiday Galleria this year with the Junior League of Wichita.
Wonderful. Good morning. Welcome. We're glad you and the entourage are here today.
Good morning, and thank you for having us. Again, my name is Paige Gray, and I have the honor and privilege of representing the Junior League of Wichita with you all this morning. Thank you again to the Sedgwick County Commission for honoring the Junior League of Wichita with the county proclamation today. We thank all of the commissioners for their partnerships and support throughout our rich history. Since the Junior League of Wichita's inception in 1925, thousands of women have served the greater Wichita area as volunteers. These women represent all walks of life with the common goals of serving the community and developing their potential as women. Our current focus area, voted on by membership in April 2022, will center around how to empower women to be safe, smart, and successful. Our largest fundraiser of the year is upon us. Holiday Galleria, a day of shopping, a year of giving, is the Junior League of Wichita's annual upscale event featuring 120 regional and national merchants. The 19th Annual Holiday Galleria is scheduled for this weekend, October 3rd through the 6th, 2024, at Century 2 Expo Hall. The objective of Holiday Galleria is to raise funds to fulfill Junior League of Wichita's goal of building a better community. Thursday, October 3rd, we will open our show with premiere party happening from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Friday, October 4th, we will host Girls' Day and Night Out from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Saturday, October 5th, we will open for general admission hours from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We will also be sharing our appreciation for teachers and staff, as well as healthcare heroes by offering free admission for these groups with an ID. Sunday, October 6th, we will host general admission hours again from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We want to share our appreciation for all military personnel, and we'll be offering free admission with an ID on Sunday. Lastly, we want to recognize and thank Commissioner Sarah Lopez, Junior League of Wichita member, class of 2023, for her service to the community and to the Junior League of Wichita. Thank you again, Commissioner Lopez, and thank you again, all of you today, for your consideration and recognition. We hope to see you at Holiday Galleria 2024.
Okay. Sounds like a great event with a lot of wonderful things happening. We appreciate you being here today. Any questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you so much for coming, all of you today. Really appreciate it. This is by far one of my favorite organizations that I get to be a part of. And I'm going to say something, no offense to all of my male colleagues here, but if you want to get something done, you get a group of strong-willed women together and you get it done. And I just appreciate the work that you guys have done over the years for this community. It really is noticed, and it is so appreciated by all of us. So, thank you for being here. I'm really excited for Holiday Galleria. I have my volunteer hour set up, so please don't get on me. I'm ready to go. But I'm excited for this weekend, and again, I appreciate the work that you guys do.
Yeah.
Thank you again for everything.
Very grateful for you and all the work that you guys do in the community. We'd like to get a picture to celebrate, if that's okay. We'll just go out to the front here on the stairs, grab a picture. If you guys can give us a five-minute break, we want to celebrate this proclamation. Okay, the gang has returned. It looks like, since about half the audience left with the proclamation, so we'll continue on business. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments, item C, resolution reappointing Chuck Warren to the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission.
Mr. Wagner, sir.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Justin Wagner, County Counselor. This item is a resolution reappointing Chuck Warren as Commissioner Howell's appointment to the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. Just as a reminder to you all, there's an interlocal agreement between Sedgwick County and the city of Wichita that governs the applications and appointments to the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. Again, this would be a reappointment. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay, great. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I see that Mr. Warren actually is here, so you won't come on down to the front. I just wanted to just say real quickly that he has been extremely faithful. This is one of those committees that doesn't pay anything, but you're there for hours every other week. And Chuck has been on this committee for quite a long time. I think he's one of the very best MAPC members out of the 14 that serve on that committee. And he has dedicated an enormous amount of his personal life to doing a good job on this. So, thank you for your faithfulness, and thank you for your expertise, and I appreciate you doing this. I make a motion to reappoint Chuck Warren to the MAPC.
I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And we have with us our county clerk.
Good morning. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly. Mr. Warren, would you like to say anything?
Don't have much to say. I just appreciate the support. I enjoy serving on a board with great volunteers. It's a great board. And I also want to say, we really appreciate the great job the staff does. It's a tremendous staff. So, appreciate going on for another four years. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Dennis?
Well, Chuck, I'm glad to see that you're staying on the MAPC. I had the opportunity to serve with them while I was still on the MAPC. Does a great job, and it's long hours and no pay. So, it takes someone who's a dedicated public servant to do that. So, thank you, Chuck, and I appreciate you serving.
Thank you for the support.
Just one more thing. Just wanted to share, you know, you did actually run for this seat at one point.
I did.
And, you know, I know that you're interested in county government. And, you know, it's one of those things, when I became elected, it was a lot of expectation that I would take, you know, basically replace all the previous appointments for the previous commissioner. And you served under the previous commissioner, and I was encouraged to really give Chuck a chance because he is really, really good. And I thought, you know, I think I'm going to do that. And I have to tell you, I'm incredibly pleased with your work on the commission. You have done a tremendous job. I still think out of the 14 members of that board, you're absolutely the number one, in my opinion. And I know that this takes a huge amount of time out of your life, and I just can't tell you how much I appreciate your expertise and your commitment and your sacrifice for what you do for this community. Thank you so much.
Kind words. Thank you very much.
Very good. Mr. Warren, thank you again for serving. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, resolution appointing Reverend Dr. Pamela M. Hughes to the Sedgwick County Emergency Communications Community Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Wagner?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. This item is a resolution to appoint Reverend Dr. Pamela M. Hughes to the Sedgwick County Emergency Communications Advisory Board as recommended by the Wichita City Council. There is a specific position on this relatively newly-created advisory board for the city to make an appointment. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay, and I will move to appoint Reverend Dr. Pamela M. Hughes to the Sedgwick County Emergency Communications Community Advisory Board.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And we have, again, there's our county clerk, Kelly Arnold, here. Swear you in.
All right, raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the Office of Sedgwick County Emergency Communications Community Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Pastor Pam?
All I have to say this morning is good morning, but it is an honor to continue to serve in our community.
Yeah. You are more commonly known as Pastor Pam to a lot of people. And you serve in such a lot of capacities for community events, really centered around public safety and criminal justice reform, and really reaching into our youth. And I just want to thank you publicly for all the work that you do in our community. It is not unnoticed. You are seen, and your impact is real. I would also say that I was at your church maybe a month ago, where I was able to take part and watch your congregation honor you in a real way, St. Paul AME. And your congregation celebrated you. You had people flying in to love on you, and it was a wonderful morning. And the way your congregation feels about you is symbolic of the way the broader community feels about all the work that you do. And here you are again, stepping up to serve in a really important board, in an important capacity. So, I just want to thank you personally for all the work that you do.
And thank you.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Very good. Madam Clerk? I'm going to pause for a second before we get into new business, and I want to call to order the governing body of Fire District Number 1 for Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024. Madam Clerk, first item.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Okay, no one has signed up for public agenda for our fire district, so next item.
New business, item A, charitable donation from the Kansas Pipeline Association.
I was wrong. Chief Nelson? I'm not Chief Williams. I'm Kevin Nelson, Deputy Chief. So, we have Mr. Rubin with us. We had the hazmat teams go to some training with the Kansas Pipeline Association. I believe they'd do a drawing. We were fortunate enough to win, so we were getting a $10,000 donation. Obviously, we really appreciate that. We plan on using it to purchase things for the hazmat team, whether it's air monitoring equipment, possibly some textbooks for training classes, stuff like that. So, I will let you say a few words.
Yes, wonderful. Please.
Good morning, commissioners. The KPA is made up of numerous pipeline companies across Kansas, and we provide free training to emergency responders, you know, throughout the beginning of the year, and numerous classes all over different counties in, you know, in Kansas. And, you know, out of the hundreds of emergency responders, companies that came and went through our training, this district was picked as the grand prize winner of our $10,000 drawing. So, I hope you can continue to see you guys at our training, and thank you very much.
Well, thank you for all the work you do with KPA, but also for this exceptional donation to the fire district, to these roughly 150 firefighters serving a broad district, the fourth-largest fire department here in the state of the fourth largest fire department here in the state of Kansas. I believe that number is still correct. And these men and women do incredible work. And you acknowledging that with a charitable donation, it's good that those are resources that are going to get put into use to strengthen our fire department and also better serve the constituents of the Fire District. So thank you for acknowledging that, and thank you for this generous donation. Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you. And I appreciate the training you provide to the Fire Districts. Just last week, I had an opportunity to go out, and Black Hills Energy was doing a demonstration on how to put out gas fires. And it was amazing. I did not know that there is a substance called Purple K that they were demonstrating. And it definitely puts out a gas fire. So thanks for that kind of training that you provide, the different pipeline companies provide to our firefighters, so that they can respond to the emergencies that we'll have across the country. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a big time gift. Thank you, sir. We appreciate the work at KPA. So I will make a motion to accept and acknowledge with great appreciation the charitable donation of $10,000 from the Kansas Pipeline Association.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Howell, Commissioner Lopez, Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you again to the KPA. Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Anything under other for the Fire District. Seeing none, next item.
Executive Session.
We have no executive session for the Fire District, so I will officially adjourn the governing body of Fire District Number One, and return us back to the Board of County Commission meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business, Item E, A Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery of General Obligation Refunding and Improvement Bond Series B 2024 of Sedgwick County, Kansas, Providing for the Levy and Collection of an Annual Tax for the Purpose of Paying the Principal of and Interest on Said Bonds As They Become Due, Making Certain Covenants and Agreements to Provide for the Payment and Security Thereof, and Authorizing Certain Other Documents and Actions Connected Therewith.
Very impressive, Madam Clerk. Lindsey Poirozzo, our CFO, is here. Good morning, Lindsey.
Well, thank you, Chairman, for introducing me. For the record, Lindsey Poirozzo, your CFO. And Kelsey, beautiful job. I don't think I even have to... No, I'm kidding. So you know, Commissioners, this has been months-long work in the efforts to do this bond sale, the proceeds of which primarily are going to be dedicated to your administrative building as we continue our march toward that. We also did some refundings through this. And Tom Calico, who is our municipal advisor, is joining me here at the podium, who will tell you about the bond sale that was held yesterday, that you gave me the authority to approve. But of course, you all are the only ones who can formally ratify that and sign that resolution. So Tom will walk you through some of the details of what it actually means from the bond sale yesterday. We also have Garth Herman with Gilmore &amp; Bell with us in the audience. He is on standby, but has no speaking part in today's agenda. I do also want to make sure to thank our finance team. Again, Nicole did a wonderful job, and Commissioner Meitzner, we appreciate your comments, too, about the AAA credit rating. We know, I think maybe we take it for granted a little bit of the time. I think maybe sometimes people make fun of us for talking about it so much. But it really is a true testament of some great financial management in this organization. And that starts with the Board of County Commissioners, and it flows down to every single person in this organization, because a lot of us have the ability to mess it up. And so my thanks to you and to our staff for all of their work to make sure that that happens, because what you're going to see today is the results of the sale yesterday that were exceptionally competitive. I think we are going to be able to save our taxpayers considerable money because of that AAA. It's not just meaningless. So with that, I'm going to ask Tom to come and speak to that. Once he is done, I would ask that you authorize the resolution and approve the bond sale. So with that, Mr. Calico, if you will come up.
Tom, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. So what you have before you this morning is a resolution which does several things. It authorizes the issuance of the bonds, prescribes the terms of the bonds, and provides a levy to pay the debt service for the bonds. The bonds we're speaking of, of course, are your 2024B general obligation bonds in the amount of $15,350,000. You may note that that was decreased slightly from $15,165,000 due to the receipt of a premium bid. As Lindsey mentioned, the bonds will do two things. They will fund a portion of the county's administration building, and then partially refund, for interest cost savings, your 2013A general obligation bonds. We took bids yesterday at 10 o'clock AM. We received eight bids from eight different investment banks. The winner was Hilltop Securities at a true interest cost of 3.29%. The bids, in our opinion, were very competitive based on the number of bids you received, the closeness of the bids. I will tell you the difference between the top, you know, the best three bids was in the thousandths of a percent, and also competitive by market indices. I'm sure you'd be interested to hear, the refunding portion did result in interest cost savings to the county of around $130,000, which is 5% of the refunded principal. You talked a little bit already about the credit rating. I think it merits some repeating, so I'll go through quickly. Of course, your AAA rating was affirmed, and that rating was assigned to the new series of bonds. In their report, S&amp;P cited various strengths. Those include a robust economy, a balanced budget, and a stable tax base, very strong reserves, a very strong management, and manageable debt and pension costs. So with that, I would recommend awarding the 2024B general obligation bonds to Hilltop Securities. And as I always want to do when I appear before you for this purpose, I want to recognize the excellent work of your staff, our good colleagues at Gilmore &amp; Bell, who do a great job for you. With that, I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Okay, Tom. And thank you for recognizing staff, and Garth and his group, for all the work they do. We are deeply appreciative, and deeply appreciative of the work you guys do as well.
Our pleasure.
Commissioners, any questions for Tom? Okay, Commissioner Lopez.
I just have one question. If we didn't have the AAA credit rating, what do you think, I know you said 3.29, what do you think that could have been without it? Would it have been much higher, I guess, is the point that I'm trying to make?
You know, in the world of public finance, especially when you get into the numbers that we talk about, you know, the incremental increase in, it would have been a higher interest rate. And the incremental increase would sound, probably to the layperson, relatively small. But when you multiply that, borrowing $15 million over 20 years, it makes a fairly substantive difference in the amount of interest. And people, I think, can relate to this, right? A modest difference in your home mortgage interest rate over the life of your mortgage, it results in a fairly... So I would tell you, you know, the savings are significant with a AAA rating.
Thank you.
Very good. Other questions for Tom? Okay. I do have some questions for Lindsey, if that's okay. I want to make sure that the public's perfectly clear of what we're doing here in regards to authorizing the bonds of 15.165. This is for county admin building, even though we don't have a county admin building in our sights yet. There's work being done and conversations that have been happening for the better part of a decade on this conversation. Why did we have to do this today? What is...
So the reason we're doing this is because the commission has authorized a lease of space here in this building. We know that that lease is extended right now through 2028, with an option to leave in 2027. And in all of the discussions we've had about a permanent location, what we've been told is that planning horizon is 30 to 36 months from the time that a decision is made until we are ready to move in. So we are trying to back out from that date and make sure that we have adequate cash, which is why we're doing something a little different. We want to make sure we have adequate cash to cover either the acquisition of a building with some renovation, or to acquire land, whatever direction the commission goes. The commission has made a decision that it will move into a permanent solution. It will not maintain a lease. So this $15 million will go toward that first step. Typically, with a county bond-funded project, we spend the money first, and then reimburse ourselves in the exact amount at the end. However, as you all know, we have a lot brewing right now. We have a community crisis center that's being constructed. We have a juvenile community-based services building that is in talks. We have regional forensic science center expansion that we're looking to do that is scheduled to be bond-funded. We have any number of projects that are all going to be competing for the same dollars of general fund cash, and we just simply didn't think that we could sustain all of that at once, and maintain kind of the integrity of our general fund fund balance. So in this case, we are bond funding what we anticipate to be about half of the cost of the project upfront, so that we have that cash, and then we can close that gap, and bond fund exactly what we need to cover the true costs of the building at the end. So hopefully, that answers your question.
Fantastic answer. I appreciate that. Appreciate the leadership and the guidance on how to appropriately do this. My next question, anytime we start talking about bonding, and there are a lot of projects, infrastructure projects happening in Sedgwick County, it's most appropriate that we ask questions about debt levels.
Absolutely.
And we had made adjustments in our debt policy in April of this year. Can you talk to us, you have no concerns about debt and where we're at? And in fact, you feel encouraged about where we're at and where we're heading?
I do. So I'll speak first to kind of that debt policy that you adopted. So if you recall, the old debt policy had five measures in it that we looked at to ascertain whether we could issue debt. Some of those measures, two of the five, actually looked at the total debt carried by every single entity in the county. And that just simply didn't make sense, because no single taxpayer in this county pays all of that debt. They all live in different cities, different school districts, and all of that. So working closely with our municipal advisor and with bond counsel, we completely revamped that policy. And so now the measures are actually based on what it takes to maintain an S&amp;P AAA credit rating, based on the benchmarks and measures that they put out. So when we actually look at that, we are so, we are so below any limit or cap that it would take to potentially imperil us on that. In addition, you know, NCAP falls off, we will pay off that debt in 2028. That's several million dollars a year that we pay. We also have other projects, like the Public Safety Building that was done through PVC bond, that will be paid off. We have the Spirit Aero Systems Economic Development Incentive that's going to be paid off. So we have quite a bit of debt limit being freed up. So we also don't want to cause any shocks to the system with our tax rate by having to, you know, pay off that debt and then increase our tax levy because we have bonding. So we try to manage all of that and make it equitable over time, keep it fairly even. And so this also allows us to do that. So we are keeping our amount of debt relatively steady, just because of all of those moving parts. So I have no concerns. And I actually think this is a pretty responsible strategy that we're taking on right now.
Very good. Appreciate that information. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Okay, very good. I will make a motion to award the sale of the bonds to the best bidder and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, I have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Howell, Commissioner Lopez, Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Tom, Garth, Lindsey, and team, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, Commercial Lease Agreement for 3639 North Comatara.
Mr. Stoltz.
Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommending we pull Item F. We were contacted yesterday. Tanya had sent you all an email early this morning. This is at the request of the seller of this building. We will pull this, and it will not come back. We are moving through with a purchase agreement on that building.
Okay. Need a motion to pull this, Justin?
Chairman Justin Wagner, County Counselor, I don't know that you, I think at this point, you could maybe be just cleanest to have a motion to take no action. Because as the manager indicated, there's not a need to defer on this item at this time.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate. Yeah. So I'll make a motion to take no action on the commercial lease agreement for 3639 North Comatara. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Howell, Commissioner Lopez, Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item G, Consideration of an Amendment to the Development Agreement for Center City South Tax Increment Financing District.
Mr. Stoltz, again.
Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoltz, again, recommending Item G be deferred. This is a consideration of an amendment to the Development Agreement for the Center City South Tax Increment Financing District, TIF. We are ahead of schedule on this. We will defer this back to November 13 or November 20, one of those two meetings.
Okay. So this will come back before us. We're just going to wait until we get some more information.
Yes.
We're ahead of schedule. Thank you for that. Okay, I'll make a motion to defer Item G, which is the consideration of amendment to the Development Agreement for Center City South Tax Increment Financing District.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Howell, Commissioner Lopez, Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item H, Consideration of an American Rescue Plan Act Spending Plan Update and Authorize Related to Revenue Replacement.
And she's back, Lindsey Poirozzo.
I am. You guys are going to be so sick of me. Lindsey Poirozzo, your CFO. We are here to talk yet again about the American Rescue Plan Act. But in what is astonishing to me, we are just a few months out from the end of the obligation. First got this money in 2021, I thought this day would never come. So I am ecstatic to be here talking about getting closer and closer to closing this project out. So just a quick reminder, the American Rescue Plan Act did give Sedgwick County $102 million in direct funding for certain authorized uses. The PowerPoint that you have at your seat includes this PowerPoint, but then also the plan at the end. So what you'll see here for the authorized uses are how we use the guidelines to develop that plan that's at the end of your packet. So of course, the response to COVID-19 public health emergency, you all did allocate a significant amount of funding and resources toward addressing that. There also was premium pay for essential workers that was at least allowable for a period of time when the pandemic was still considered in effect. We did also authorize some funding for that. There is the cost of government services to the extent funding was reduced by the COVID-19 public health emergency. And so you all also have a resolution in your backup that shows the calculation that was put forward by Treasury for computing that. We're north of $100 million that, based on the Treasury's calculation, we lost out in in revenue because of the pandemic. The fourth category was investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Because the rules were somewhat nebulous on that, and because the state was taking the lead on many of those things, this commission did not allocate funds for that. And then last year, as is always the case, it seems, with any federal awards, they provided some new guidance, and that allowed for certain surface transportation and natural disasters to be paid. Of course, we didn't have, thankfully, we did not have any natural disasters or road projects that would have qualified under those terms. So that was not something really we ever discussed. So where we are today is, as of mid-September, your plan shows what has actually been obligated and spent. That plan also shows the total dollars that we anticipate allocating for the rest of 2024, as well as for '25 and '26 for some isolated projects, which we'll talk about in a moment. But you can see what those grand totals look like here. $12.8 million allocated toward the public health response, $400,000 allocated toward employee recruitment, $700,000 for COVID protections. That includes things like our county-wide Zoom licenses. We have Recovery Connect, which was our community navigator program, which has since obviously ended. And then the biggest chunk of our funding by far, for court backlog and public safety, dedicated across multiple areas, the sheriff, the district attorney, the district court, regional forensic science center. And those dollars will continue a bit into the future as well. Again, we'll get to that here in a minute. Premium pay thankfully has ended in 2021, so no additional funds allocated for that. ARPA management and compliance, we're at a total of $4.8 million. That included in-depth internal control analysis, grant management, ARPA consulting, documentation of everything that we spent. Generally, a suggestion is that that would be around 10%. You can see that we are well below 10% of our award on that. So we think that's a pretty good success story, that we've been able to maintain perfect audits with that amount of funding. And then one of the fun ones that I know we've been focused on quite a bit over the last year or so is revenue replacement. So again, this goes back to that cost of government services. We are authorized, as a county, to use the dollars from ARPA to use any traditional, anything we would have done, a traditional government service. So we are using and recommending today additional use of $10 million via resolution. That would go in to reimburse the general fund for sheriff office salaries and the general fund, only salaries and overtime, no payroll benefits, nothing like that, just strictly those dollars, because we believe that is easy to show as a traditional government service. And we obviously have ample documentation via our timekeeping system, payroll registers, to document those costs from a federal compliance perspective. And that leaves us, then, with a contingency of $3.15 million. So we know that we continue to have shopping carts that are coming in related to some of these CIP projects and things. And so we want to make sure that we still have some money saved back for anything as we continue to work aggressively with departments to try and get these dollars narrowed in. To the extent we don't access those dollars, you'll see me one time each in October and December. those dollars, you'll see me one time each in October and December, we will be trying to allocate those funds to revenue replacement. So potentially, we could be above $20 million that comes into the county general fund as reimbursement revenue. Again, our total budget is 100.2 million. And while some of these categories are changing, obviously, the overall award does not. So a few key updates since June, obviously, that 10 millions or $10 million for revenue replacement that we just mentioned. We also have right-sized project budgets. So I am going to take a moment and step out of this show and bring up the plan itself. And what I would like to show you for emphasis is this column off to the far right, the orange color. What you can see in that 2021 to 2024 totals column is what you all last approved on June 5. And then the figures in the very far right column, that final column, are dollar changes from what's being presented today versus what was presented then. And you can see narrowly across the board, those dollars have gone down, obviously, but for revenue replacement. And so we have been able to work with departments and they have shown tremendous good faith. And typically, we hear a lot about departments trying to spend down every penny they've got. They're not doing that. They are working very closely with us to make sure that we are able to hone in and get these dollars specifically. So I just, I think it's important to note how those totals have changed. So going back to the PowerPoint then, we also know that for '25 and '26, we do have several projects that are going to continue to be funded. Obviously, the roughened lease will continue to be paid through ARPA as long as possible through, so through December 31, 2026. We also know that the adult detention facility has a CIP project for locks and cameras. They're already making good progress on that. We're anticipating that that will actually be complete at the end of 2025. And then we have two contracts for the district court. It took a while for us to get those started and up and running, so we're allowing those to continue. We still have the documentation that shows that these are related to COVID and the backlog that was caused. There will be some domestic conciliators for the family law side, as well as a contract with the Board of Indigent Defense for second chair. If you remember, those more serious crimes require that. So we are actually have a funding agreement with them to continue that. So those are the things that will continue past 2024. But again, we have to have all of those funds obligated by the end of this year. So that's why your plan continues to show 2021 to 2024 totals. There is a new footnote on the plan. I am asking that you all authorize me to go into that ARPA contingency as necessary between now and year, end of year, if there are personnel overages. And so what I'm speaking to about those are, let's say, an attorney gets promoted in the district attorney's office, or let's say, the sheriff's office with the pay adjustments, or the district attorney's office with their pay adjustments that are going into effect, I think, on this pay period, that if there are reasons that their budget is slightly over, that you would authorize me to go in and address that immediately, obviously with report out to you all, because I will be back two more times this year to talk about ARPA. And finally, I just wanted to follow up, because the last time we talked in June, we were talking about ARPA positions and those that were being requested in the 2025 general fund budget. Now that we know how that has shaken out, I wanted to give you a quick report out on that. So we have seven additional positions in the county general fund budget for 2025. We have one in EMS for logistics, one in risk for the fit test, risk fit testing position. We have two in the district attorney's office. We have one in HR. We have the CJCC analyst. And then we have one that will continue for district court, which was a decision package that they brought about the self-help liaison. We also allowed the sheriff's office to repurpose 15 existing positions. Bear in mind that once that CIP project is complete, we do anticipate eliminating positions. So this was more to just kind of keep that simple. The DA is taking two of his attorney positions and basically one is going away to be used for a different staffing position that helps alleviate the burden, and then also underfilling another attorney position. And one of the bottom lines here that I think is a success story, you know, we didn't want to add positions. However, in June of 2022, when I was here talking to you, the commission had authorized 138.5 FTEs just within ARPA alone. A lot of that was in the health department to deal with the COVID health response. But still, we're down to seven new positions that, according to many of these departments, we probably would have, they would have come to you and been able to make a compelling case to be funded, general fund dollars before. Now we've just had a different revenue source. So I do think that's a good story. One of the things I also need the commission to sign off on is some contract debt or some deadlines for the departments to make sure that we get this cleaned up in an adequate amount of time, because what you will see is December 18 is your final meeting of this year. At least we anticipate it will be. And so that's going to be our last opportunity to come to you and ask for revenue replacement. So all of this is done with anticipation that we do not leave one penny on the table to be paid back to the Treasury. We want to get that to, for use on revenue replacement. So you can see the dates here for our contracts, commodities and equipment. You can see on this slide, the information for personnel and how that means that the position is ending in 2024. Their final pay period actually is December 1 to December 14, so that we will know precisely how much we are paying for those positions by their paycheck date on December 20. But if it's funded in the 2025 budget, then it will continue through the final payroll of this year. For 2025 and 2026 projects, you can see the dates on this slide. It's crazy to think that this is coming, but it will be here before we know it. So with that, you can see the project totals. Sorry to take so much time, but I do think it's important. It's $100 million, a fifth of our budget. So I wanted to make sure to give it some due consideration.
Very good.
So any questions I can answer? If not, I authorize, or I recommend you authorize the spin plan and approve the resolution to transfer those funds.
Very good. Okay, couple of questions. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Lindsay, please pass on to your entire staff what a great job you did during this entire process. This has been, ever since we started in COVID, we've been working through this process. And numerous, very detailed reports had to be submitted back to the federal government to show that we are using the funds the way that they intended us to do it. And there's been no errors in any of those. So that's fantastic news. At the same time that you did all this for COVID, you still had to manage a budget of 550 to 600 million dollars a year. So this is on top of that. This is not part of your normal day-to-day work. This is something that was added. And over the last several years, you've done a great job. I want to thank you very much. I've been advocating for some time for revenue replacement to get some of that over there. I'm glad that we're going to do that today, finally. I think that's a great option that we have. So again, just pass on to everyone how much we appreciate them.
They're fantastic. So thank you for saying that and recognizing them.
Very good. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, and I echo the previous comments of the previous speaker, but I do have one question regarding the CJCC analyst position. As far as I know, that CJCC is not doing any actual work. I know when I've, when I've attended CJCC, they do provide a lot of data. But since we're not meeting any longer, what are they doing exactly?
Well, it's an excellent question, because we have now been through two rounds of interviews for the position and the position is yet to be filled. So right now, that position is anticipated to be held. And, and once we have that, then I think you'll start to see some momentum in conversations with Rusty, who's kind of the designated staff person for that CJCC, and with Tom. I know that there is interest in kind of retooling what CJCC looks like and what its purpose is and maybe who the players are. But we really need someone on staff to help drive that. We've got very busy people who can't always make that the priority. So hopefully, we can get some, some pretty quick filling of that position and then we can give you a better answer on what their long-term plans are.
Having served on that, having served on that board in the past, I do appreciate the data that they provide. It just, it's a curiosity that if they're going to continue to provide data, who are they going to give the data to? Or what are you going to do with the data? Because there's no CJCC currently meeting at least any longer, hasn't met for quite a long time. So.
I think those questions are yet to be answered, but they're certainly on the forefront of many people's minds.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay, seeing none, I will move to approve the updated spin plan, adopt the resolution and authorize the use of $10 million of ARPA funds for revenue replacement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Howe, Commissioner Lopez, Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Lindsay, thank you again.
Thank you all very much.
Very good. Next item, please.
Item I, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on September 26, 2024.
Nine items today. Joe Thomas, got your work cut out for you.
We've been pretty busy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, purchasing director, for the record. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on September 26, as the chairman has mentioned, contains nine items. Our first item is Bridge Improvements, B498, project number for Public Works. This recommendation is to accept the low bid for Mies Construction, and it's in the amount of $484,595.50. Our second item is Kronos Telestaff Maintenance and Support for various departments. This recommendation is to accept the quote from UKG Kronos Incorporated in the amount of $74,320.69. That's effective from January 1 and runs through December 31 of 2025. Pardon me. Item number three, Patient Transportation Services, Calm Care and Sheriff's Office. Recommendation is to accept the proposal from David Roberts Consulting LLC. They're doing business as Ride Care. Set the rates listed and to establish contract pricing for a period of one year with four one-year options to renew. Item number four, Agilent Maintenance and Support Plan Service Contract for the Regional Forensic Science Center. And that recommendation is to accept the quote from Agilent Technologies. It's for a three-year total of $231,897.60. Item number five is Thermal Electron Maintenance and Support Plan Service Contract also for Regional Forensic Science Center. Recommendation is to accept the quote from Thermal Electron North America LLC. It's for a period of one year with two one-year options to renew, and that's in a total amount of $84,010.97. Item number six is Radio Encryption for Emergency Communications. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from Motorola Solutions. It's in the amount of $1,214,592.7. Make sure I keep my numbers straight. Okay, item number seven, On-Call Elevator Maintenance for Facilities Maintenance. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from Otis Elevator Company. It's in the amount of $87,300 on an annual basis. This contract for the rates are listed, is for a total period of three years with two one-year options to renew. We're almost there. Item number eight, Celebrite Incorporated for the Sheriff's Office. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from Celebrite Incorporated. It's for a total amount of $53,300. And last but not least is our website redesign for Strategic Communications. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from Exemplify LLC. And it's in the amount of $98,500. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I do recommend approval of the nine items.
Okay. Commissioner, any questions on the nine items from Joe? Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just noticing a few of these are, quite a few of these are single source this time. And on some of these single source, at least a couple of them, the increases over previous contract is extensive. I mean, for example, number four, we're looking at an 84% increase over the previous three-year contract in a single source. Do we want to, do we, that gives me pause. I guess I wonder, why we don't go back and just say, let's rethink this a little bit?
First of all, the designation single source just means that there is the original manufacturer who can only service machines to keep them within the warranty, and that is Agilent Technologies. So technically, it's a single source, even though there are other sources available. These are Agilent machines. And I believe Dr. Steadman mentioned that there were several reasons for the increase. One was that several instruments were added in the third year, and they had some instruments that went from a partial to a full year coverage. And then, as we all know, with inflation, it proved to be a factor as well.
And the next one, number five, is similar to that. And it's.
Yes, number five, yes, sir.
I didn't actually calculate this one, but it's roughly the same.
Right.
It's maybe not quite as much of an increase, but it's pretty high.
Yeah. In that one, it was noted that the previous contract, one piece component was covered just with a preventive maintenance only. And so the coverage was expanded. And the reason was because during the repair with just that limited coverage, there was excess costs from travel, parts and labor because it was a restricted coverage. And so we've expanded the coverage to cover those extra costs, which, as you know, those costs continue to go up.
Going back to number four for just a minute. So are you telling me that during the warranty period, these are just, what are these costs for them? What are they, what are they providing during the warranty period? What is this?
Let me have Dr. Steadman provide you a greater detail on what's included, if you don't mind.
This is Maintenance and Support Plan.
Yes, sir.
Shelley Steadman, Director of the Regional Forensic Science Center. And to be in compliance with our ANAB accreditation, we have to have all of our critical instrumentation serviced by the manufacturer once a year. That includes a calibration and a preventative maintenance visit. And so a lot of times, when I purchase an instrument, I try to add an extended warranty that will cover that for a period of time, say, three or four years. When we purchase things under a grant, for example, right now, we're purchasing some instrumentation under a CDC grant, and they will only allow us to have that extended coverage during the life of the grant. So when these instruments come off of those grant cycles, we have to provide that coverage or remove older instrumentation from that coverage. And so that's what we're in the process of doing right now. One other thing that I'd like to point out is, we do lock in these prices for a period of three years. And when that happens, we're not seeing the 7% increase in year, after year one, and 7% increase after year two, and then again after year three. And so after a period of three years, we tend to see a 21% increase for each instrument. And this is a, that Agilent in particular is a complex agreement. There were instruments that were on partial years. There were instruments added over time. And so a combination of those factors, including a significant increase in 2023 that the manufacturer imposed on all of their customers due to economic pressures, has caused that one to be especially more costly.
And was, was this equipment acquired through a grant, I guess is what you're saying?
Yes. I would say it's fair to say, most all of the equipment at the Regional Forensic Science Center is acquired by grants.
I guess it'd be my preference in the future to, excuse me, to establish, if you will, a preventive maintenance and calibration contract at the purchase for the, for the warranty periods. We don't have the, this dilemma of having a warranty, but, but then the, the vendor has a chance to raise the prices to any, really any number they want. And we're kind of obligated to just accept it, because we have no other options at that point.
Well, the vendor is the only one that's going to be able to provide the parts to, to fix these instruments. So we don't really have a lot of options and another vendor to come and, and provide.
What I'm saying is, so I disagree with what you just said there. So rather than be in, in a very difficult position, it'd be nice to have the preventive maintenance and calibration agreement set up for the warranty period at the beginning of that acceptance of that, when we purchase that equipment, to have that established for the warranty period. So that they don't have the chance halfway through at a warranty period to change the prices on us 21%. Just to weigh, it seems to me that by only having three years on the previous contract, and yet the warranty runs out much longer than that, we're in a very, we're in a rock and hard place. We have, we have to accept whatever number they give us. We don't have, we have no other real options at that point, because it's their equipment, unless you want to start completely over again and, and simply replace the equipment with somebody else halfway through a warranty period. So putting this in this awkward position is what I'm actually addressing right now. And you're saying the same thing. Because it's their equipment, we only have one vendor that can do repairs or calibrations and preventative maintenance. And rather than changing the costs on us halfway through a warranty period, it'd be nice to establish that for the entire period in the future. Makes some sense. I'm not sure I'm saying.
Commissioner, if I can, let me, let me vet this with staff. I see your point. And this, this goes beyond Dr. Steadman's work area. This could go into IT and other areas where you have to buy a specialty product. You get so much warranty on the front end of that acquisition. But we know, and Shelley knows that she'll keep these machines for 10 years, for a generation. What happens in years four through 10, as far as warranty? And can you cap it to where we maybe agree? And can you cap it to where we maybe agree to a reasonable 5% or 4% increase every year? Let me do some work on that, some research work on that, and I'll report back to the commission.
And I think this goes way beyond our Regional Forensic Science Center. I think election equipment may be the same way. I can think of all kinds of examples where I don't want to be in a situation where they basically have a sole source opportunity to raise prices to any number they like, but we don't really have an option to really be competitive minded because we're stuck with their equipment, so to speak. So I think you get the point. Thank you so much. I'm sure this is a pass today. I just wanted to ask the question as to why an 84% increase over previous three years is surprising. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Joe, I have a question on nine. I'd ask Tanya if she might be able to help with this. This is on the website redesign, and I'm very much in favor of what we did here, but I want the public to know why the bid board went this direction. This was sent out to, I think, 381 RFPs were sent out to, 381 vendors. I think you shortlisted it to five. What we're going with from the recommendation from the bid board is that we're actually going with the highest bid, not by a lot of dollars, but it is the highest bid. And I want the public to know why. I think there's some really good reasons why you, the bid board made this decision. So, Tanya, could you give any answers?
Sure. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. So you are correct. The proposal that we went with is the highest proposal. However, this vendor gave us a comprehensive proposal. They met our entire scope. We felt that they had the most experience. We did a demo with them. Their demo, we felt, was phenomenal. They did some before and after, and just were really impressed with their before and after. Of course, we collaborated with IT on this because IT has a different perspective that they're looking for on our website than, of course, communications does. So I would say from communications, what we're looking for is design and usability from the outside folks that are using our website, and then, of course, inside employees using E-line and so forth. Information architecture, I would say, is what IT is looking for. So that's sort of your dropdown boxes, how you're kind of maneuvering through the website. Chantel is here, and Chantel does a lot of work on our website, as does Matt Hare. Chantel will always talk about the accessibility, the ADA.
Yes.
Requirements, and she was most impressed with Exemplify. She went out and looked at the websites that they have done and found that Exemplify was most impressive on their ADA accessibility for the website. And I can talk about some of the websites that they shared with us on their demo, and again, it was just really impressive.
I wanted that opportunity for you guys to come and share exactly what it was. And this was kind of a promise I also made to one of our speakers during public comment, Andrew Crane, was about how we would take into consideration the ADA accessibility when we're building out a new website, particularly those that are visually impaired, so that we can make sure that we are trying to engage everyone in our community with the access to our website. When I read the meeting minutes and went over all the details, I noticed that that was part of the discussion, and I felt like the community needed to know. This isn't the highest bid by a lot of dollars, but it's not normal for us to go with the highest bid, but there were reasons why on this item, and I think there are reasons that are justifiable. So I appreciate the work that you guys put into that.
And if I could just make one more comment. We had Christina Long on our review panel. So that was somebody from the outside that we had on there. She had a very different perspective. She wasn't internal, so she's also someone who is in the communication field, also works with entrepreneurs. So again, she was somebody that we pulled to be on this panel, somebody who was looking from the outside to review these proposals. So we definitely, we're very thankful for her perspective as well, being on the panel. So just wanted to share that.
Part of what I wanted to do here was, many times Joe comes up there, as eloquent as he is, and he goes through this list, and then we just knock this thing out. And I want the public to know that there is a lot of work with, by that bid board and these RFPs and the shortlisting, and there is substantial work, that these decisions are really vetted in a big-time way. And this is just a minute thing that I noticed as a business person. I noticed, looking at this, about the ADA accessibility, and this is in line with some promises that I made to people in this community that that was going to be taken into consideration. So thank you for that. Okay. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. I was not aware of the ADA aspect of this. I am curious, can you please describe what does that mean in terms of the, what type of features would we expect to see?
Let Chantel speak to that.
Good morning, Commissioners. As far as ADA compliance, when a person with accessibility issues goes to our website, sometimes they use a screen reader. And that screen reader doesn't necessarily read everything. It reads things behind the scene. It kind of points users to specific points like headings or tables, and it kind of highlights things that they want to hear, where they don't have to, you know, listen to every single thing on the page. They can go to that specific point. Another item is design. Maybe a visually impaired person can't see as well. So we want to make sure our color contrast is good and that they can see the color contrast.
Do you know whether we wrote the request for bid such that these points were articulated in the bid request?
Yes, we did.
So I would have to assume that the low, I don't know if this is the low bid or not, but I see at least one on here that's at $34,000, which is roughly almost a third of the cost we're accepting today. So I assume their bid includes the ADA.
That bid actually didn't encompass all of our scope. That was, they were going to provide us with Adobe Illustrator pages, which basically would just be like pictures, and had nothing to do with ADA. It wouldn't encompass any ADA compliance or any guidance to that effect.
And you use the word ADA. ADA is a federal law that requires certain things. Are you using the term ADA as in this is federally required, or is this simply this is something we're doing above and beyond this, what's required to make it more accessible to people with disabilities?
So the ADA, I mean, using ADA compliance as a general term, we go by the WCAG. They just released a 2.2 version, so we like to be in compliance with that. That is the government standard. There's AAA compliance, which is above and beyond. So they kind of have different ratings on the WCAG 2.2.
So is this bid today the initial build of this website, or is this going to be support after they hand over the website design? Are they going to continue to maintain this as like a webmaster? Is there a continuing?
So their role is going to be to offer us the, we are going to implement every, all the changes. We actually have a boot shop template that we're going to implement before, and they're going to offer their guidance and help us, you know, make the changes that we need to make, and we will implement those changes. And for maintenance, we are, we don't have a maintenance agreement with them, and we will continue to maintain the website.
Curiously, if we had any, do we receive complaints about our existing website very often? Do we have a place I can go see those complaints?
I don't have any complaints. I haven't. Nicole?
Hello again. Nicole Gibbs, Director of Strategic Communications. We don't have any or have received any written complaints since I've had, excuse me, been in this position. There's been feedback from different folks verbally saying, hey, we need to look at this. This is an issue here, but we've not had anything in the formal aspect of it.
When you say feedback from folks, you mean like?
Internal staff saying somebody's had a hard time finding this. The website's hard to look for or hard to find information, those kinds of things. But in regards to ADA compliance, I've not had any complaints.
Okay. All right. That's enough answers to my questions so far, but I would be interested in separating this item from the rest of them for consideration, so I can vote differently on this item, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
That'd be fine. Okay, so I will move to approve items one through eight on the bid board.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Howe, Commissioner Lopez, Chairman Beatty.
Hi. And then now I'll move to approve item nine on the bid board.
Second.
A motion and a second. Commissioner Howe?
Just wanted to, I guess, register my thoughts. I'm not ready to move forward on this one. This is one of those things where I think it's, websites are places to go to get information primarily. People don't go there and just, it's not intended to be entertainment. It's intended to be a way to get information. And I think our website actually does a decent job at that personally. I think that, again, this is one of those things that's a, it's a nice to have more than it's a need, and trying to cut places to spend money that we don't actually have to spend, this is one of those things I don't think we have to do. So I'd like to not support this one today. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Howe, Commissioner Lopez, Chairman Beatty.
Hi. Okay, Joe, thank you. Appreciate you and the bid board.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Stole. Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stole's County Manager's Office recommend approval of consent items J through X. With the exception of item Q, we're going to defer that and bring that back at a subsequent meeting.
Okay, Justin, we'll come back and make a secondary motion on Q. Okay. All right, Commissioners, any questions on the consent agenda today? A lot of conversations on these. Okay, I'll move to approve consent items J through X, with the exception of item Q.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Howe, Commissioner Lopez, Chairman Beatty.
Hi. And now I will also move to defer item Q, which is a consideration of a grant award in the amount of $1,808,471 for the Central Plains Area Agency on Aging.
Second.
The motion to defer, we have a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Howe, Commissioner Lopez, Chairman Beatty.
Hi. Okay, next item, please.
Committee reports.
Okay, Commissioners, do we have any committee reports you'd like to share with the public? Okay, I see none. Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Anything under other? I would have to share a couple of things. One, I think this is important progress for the community, but it also highlights work that's being done in our district attorney's office, in our sheriff's office, and also at the courts. Our district attorney, Mark Bennett, sent over some data today that I think is relevant that the community knows. In 2021, we had 126 active, which meaning on the docket awaiting for trials, and 126 homicides being charged in district court. That was in 2021. 2022, we had 124 homicides on those dockets. 2023, we had 108. These are big numbers. At the beginning of the year, in January of 2024, we had 95 homicides that were active on the dockets. In August of this year, we had 81. And as of this morning, we now have 75 active, meaning they're on the docket awaiting trial homicides that are being charged in district court. Although that number, 75 active here in this community, is a big number, and I think that's a jarring number to know that many homicides are being tried in this community, I think it also underscores the progress that we're making. This is the lowest, the fewest homicides that are active and on dockets since pre-COVID in January of 2020. So I just want to publicly give credit to Mark Bennett, the district attorney, and his office, our courts, the district courts, sheriff's office. There's just a lot of collaboration happening in this front. That's an alarming number, but there is progress being made in moving these cases through our court system. And I think that we need to give some credit where credit is due for that. Second thing is, last week, I had select members of my Citizens Advisory Board go over and see Dr. Stedman at the Forensic Science Center. I appreciate the opportunity for the tour that they gave to answer questions. I've received two follow-up texts or an email from people in my cab just talking about, they had no idea about all the things that are happening at the Forensic Science Center, from toxicology to pathology to firearms to fire to what's going on in the coroner's office. So just want to thank the folks over there, Dr. Stedman and your team, for giving us the time to go tour. And I think our community, I think we do a justice to our community when they know all the things that are happening in detail with all 46 departments of Sedgwick County Government. And that's the one building and one department where I think that so many people don't really know the full capacity of all that's going, and how it really is a conduit to so many things that are happening with justice and crime and things that are happening. So the other thing that they notice is that we are really out of room over there. And I know Lindsay had made a mention that we're having a conversation possibly about the Forensic Science Center in the future and what space looks like. So when you tour that building, you begin to see just how cramped it is in there and how they're maximizing the space they have and doing really important work. So I just wanted to make sure that I thank Dr. Stedman publicly and her staff for making time for people in District Four to come see everything going on over there. Anything else, Commissioners, under other? Commissioner Dennis?
Can I follow up on the last statement? We were looking at one time with facilities on trying to buy some land next to the Forensic Science Center in order to be able to expand that, but it kind of fell by the wayside. Is there any chance that we can re-energize that, or is that total impossibility?
There's about five people I want to call on here, but Tanya, you want to start us up here. But we are landlocked there. There was, we spent a lot of time trying to acquire a residence to the north, and I know that's what fell through and weren't able to obtain, so.
Let's see. Good morning, Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. So what the manager said is correct. We were not able to secure a residence in that area. So what we have done is some reprogramming with Dr. Stedman, and we just finished that, I think, last week. So there is some space that is just adjacent to the Regional Forensic Science Center, the Health Department, that we are looking at. There's a parking lot, of course, in that area. So we believe that with that reprogramming, we might be able to capture some of that space if we want to do a new build based on what that programming looks like. And it will probably be DNA space along with some additional space for her space needs. So just right across that area, but of course, we just finished that programming. So we're going to look into what that might look like, what a cost of a new build would be, and then, of course, present that to Commissioners through a CIP process.
Okay, so that residence, it's impossible to acquire that, then?
It is.
Okay. And don't we own some land to the west of the Forensic Science Center? I thought we bought some land a number of years ago.
To the west of, does that sound familiar? Okay. Okay, understanding that that's KU.
Okay. Well, I agree that they're out of space, and so we need to continue to pursue that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Appreciate that. Commissioners, anything else under other? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive session.
Okay, we have no executive session today? Well, that's great. Kind of in a rhythm there with executive sessions. No offense, Justin. Have a second. Okay, we are done. There are some items that we moved off the agenda. There are some items that were deferred that we'll come back to. Appreciate the content, appreciate the conversations today and all the actions that were taken. So 10:44, we are adjourned.